Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand ready for the invitation of our members.
I say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, he's in question. Once again, Heavenly Father, we gather here today, Lord, we ask that you will watch over this meeting, Lord, we ask that you will give us guidance, and, Lord, we ask for serenity and understanding. Lord, we ask that you will be over this governing body tonight, that you will give them the ability and sometimes the courage and always the wisdom to make the decisions that are necessary for the best interest, not only of the town, but in your board. So we ask all this in your name of prayer.
Okay, at this time on the agenda, we have executive session, we have a joint plan on, I have a joint session with the Town Council's IDA and the Council on Perspective Business. And normally, we don't have executive sessions before the meetings, but and with our perspective business here to dine early, we're going to change them out really good. So at this time, we have a motion go to the executive session for proposed perspective businesses and pushing on there.
So we have to make a motion?
They got a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Also, the IDA needs to make a motion too.
Alright, you can make a motion.
Your executive session says.
I need to say, just say, make that motion?
I'll say.
All in favor? Okay, we're good.
We'll be back there. We'll be back in about twenty seconds.
Yes.
Sit, first sit down. I take a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a second.
Okay, now, this is a special executive session, whereas the Town Council has to be an executive session on this day to sort of record, in accordance to provisions of Freedom with Tendy Freedom and Information Act, whereas Section 2.1, that's 344.1, and because the junior course of certification by this council that such executive sessions were conducted from 12 to 14th law, therefore, it would be resolved that the Town Council hereby certifies that the best of each member's knowledge only the public business matters loss of exemption from the open meeting requirements between the law discussing executive session through which this certification resolution applied. And only such public business matters as were identified in motion and convening the executive session and heard and discussed consideration by the Town Council. We'll do a roll call vote. You can start on the left hand. That's my board.
Aye.
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 My motion carried. We'll move on to the special presentations. On the agenda is a question from Brian Allison. And Phil, come on, state your name and address.
I'm Brian Allison, from 5418 Thompson Valley Road, Tassau, Virginia. I'm a member, owner, or owner of Plum Creek Winery in Thompson Valley. We are, we have been working on a beer and wine festival for Tassau County. And we, I came to you today to ask if I could use Main Street for this festival on July 8th in 59. We have several nonprofits, we have Back of the Bike Against Child Abuse, we're going to donate to them, we're going to donate to White Christmas. We're going to donate, well, we do every year anyway, the town dinner. And we're working on something with the senior braces with Sheriff's Office. I don't know exactly what all you need from me, but I'd like to, I'd like to permission to use Main Street, preferably from 3 o'clock that evening until 9 o'clock that night. And we'd like to have some help from the town if you would to set that up and help me out if we could.
I would let Council know, just for the record, Mayor, Robin has checked that date, and the date is cleared. And once again, anything, if it got anything to do with ABC, we'll always come before Council, which is reasonable, man, for nothing.
Anybody else have any questions?
We have the insurance that covers the event.
Will that permit to happen?
I'm responsible with your permit and everything.
Can you get it in that amount of time?
Yes, I've already ordered a return in. But I'm allowed four bits a year on the winery. And I chose Tassau because Tassau's been my life and home. I want Tassau to grow. And that's where we stay.
So will your permit cover?
Covers all, anywhere I want to go.
I mean, but everybody else that comes in?
Yeah, and my insurance will cover it too.
How many different breweries and wineries do you have?
We're going to have like, we're going to have Virginia Eagle from Pulastine, we're going to have Bluefield beverage from down at Fourth Bristol, and we're going to have 11 different wines. Total of like 12, 14 different beers. We're going to do craft beers, and we're going to do our wine and 10 other different wines. It's going to be $20 for 20 samples, and the samples are only like five ounces. I brought you a red card to look at, show you what we have. But the, the main thing of this event is, we know we're not going to, it's not for us to make money we're trying to put back in the community. Like, we've got plenty of other pharmacy, I mean, the Poi Pharmacy will sell tickets, and part of those proceeds from those tickets she sells will go back to White Christmas. We got Back of the Bike Against Child Abuse, it's going to set up, and they're going to do a bike show, and they're going to do a kids' bike show. I've got several sponsors that already say they're willing to put money into the kids' section, and we're going to make it a big event in one industry for the kids. That way, the kids will enjoy themselves, have themselves a good day.
Are each one of these like wines or beers or breweries, are they each independent, or is this one person bringing all this stuff?
I go through the distributing company, and he carries all those different varieties. And we chose the different ones that we thought that no one may have chosen or tasted before.
Oh, so each one of these aren't going to come and set up?
No. All we're going to have is Virginia Eagle on one end, and Blue Ridge beverage on the other end, and our wine here, and the other wines here.
So you're setting all this up, we do, during this driving?
Yeah.
Would you want to hold Main Street?
Let me ask you, let me.
I think maybe down towards like the Irma's House, the front porch? Back up this way so far, and then set up a bike show in there.
Let me ask you this, only because I was approached by Junior Ruth Friday, and it wasn't Corey, but it was Danny Willis that came to me on behalf of Corey, who was in Corey's, um, it might, Corey has an overshare, right? Danny was his only customer the day he shut Main Street down on Saturday. So at 3 o'clock, it doesn't really affect, but it does affect Junior. And that day affected Junior's restaurant too. He was down a few thousand dollars, you know, days. So is there a way that if we do this, that we can close down Main Street, where there's still access to Seven?
No, we can do that by routing it. But Main Street, because of the logistics of the traffic, when you shut it down, you can't like shut down half of Main Street for any vehicle traffic. Because, just because of the logistics of the roads, Pine Street, Truck Street, the way it works in larger vehicles. However, in, we can, the parking for Seven would just, it'll have to be foot traffic anytime you shut down the street. Now, I will say that I talked to Junior myself, and obviously, he may have counted numbers, but I talked to him the day after, and maybe he counted numbers since then, but he, you know, my response, I mean, his response to me was, oh, they did pretty good for the first cruise in, he looks forward to grow, he didn't have a problem with it. If you'll, if Council will recall, there was an email that went out from my office that was extremely aggressive about shutting down Main Street and cutting off any of the businesses.
Yeah, any of them, after the Irma.
That's right, and the reason for it was because I rightfully took a beat, and understandably, from existing businesses that were there before Seven never opened. And I stressed to everybody, you know, Claudine, everybody in the email, not just Claudine, everybody that runs an activity in town, the communication with those businesses must take place. So there are, there's businesses up there that, you know, that really communicate with big town. So, Councilman Brady.
You're exactly right, there, there. Do you have any other food vendors coming?
We've got a barbecue guy that said he would come, and we've got Donut Man coming.
I'd like to see if Seven got an opportunity, and I guess Irma won't be open at that time, but like, no one is competing with anything they'd want to make, maybe be out in front of the restaurant.
I don't care what they do.
I mean, I think that's.
Well, I would think some of these things would benefit them.
Yeah, me too.
Actually, I think that this right here would draw people in to the restaurant.
That's what I'm thinking. It's just parking, right, the parking is the problem. And once again, when we have events on Main Street, it, it's impossible to shut off half of Main Street. You can't, because if you shut it off at the courthouse, and people come to the post office, and they got to do it, you do it. So there's, it's just logistically, you can't do it.
Can you not have a big sign where we have the road blocked off saying where the parking for Seven could be?
And we just got to, we got to do that. We've got to, we've got to dress up.
Is it seven anymore? It's the coffee shop?
Yeah, any of it is.
Coffee shop. Right, so we'll have to have an opportunity for them to get to those places, because like, I agree, if a bunch of people come in, they're going to find out that we have a new coffee shop that they wouldn't otherwise know about. They'll eat some Seven food that maybe they haven't, but we got to do deal with it.
Well, I wouldn't do food vendors, I would let Seven sell all the food they wanted to sell, but you've got to have so many, so much food in here, so they're not.
Yeah, probably.
If you're going to eat, if you're going to.
Well, you're going to eat to get your mouth full, right. So I figured that if they, if Seven wants to sell food, I'm sure there's Seven themselves there, and it probably introduces some people to them that they had never seen before. They'll say, wow, there's a restaurant they're going to try it out.
I don't know which way Council is leaving, but I would like for Council to recognize direction and management, me and myself, needs to establish a parking program for events, and that way, that'll give you the comfort to approve or dis. I'm just saying, we need, we absolutely need to provide a parking for our businesses on Main Street that operate in the, such as the coffee shop, Irma, Seven, possibly Corey sometimes, who works late evenings. And yeah, that's a real issue right now, parking, I'm just telling you, it's a real issue on Main Street, parking.
Good problem to have.
Well, this thing won't, this thing won't be until July 8th. When we discuss that, you know, this special meeting that we're going to have.
That's a lot of ways, got to market it, advertise it.
I've been advertising already, I'm just hoping to join. I'm trying to put, I'm trying to put that there.
Trying to better ask for forgiveness.
Does that work?
I'll make a motion. Sorry, got this out, it's for good cause. I'll make a motion, and see it happen.
I say.
Motion say, any other discussion?
I'll make my same comment.
You don't have to, I know one of this, but that's fine.
I do not like the idea of the town voting to serve alcohol and beer and wine on the Main Street, and then letting the people drive off with kids and stuff in their cars. I cannot, I cannot back that.
See, the thing about this, when you get an alcohol license, like I get my alcohol license, I got my people that's running my beer tent, my wine tent, and they look at these people. And if they got the remote thought that they're too much, they cut them off. Some of these events let them go to their max.
I understand.
I don't allow that because it's my license.
I don't, I just cannot see voting on something where we know that the people are going to be driving off with alcohol in their bloodstream, and if there's an accident, that's on my prerogative.
Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
It's always about one.
I don't care.
I don't have anything.
You got that right, I don't care, it don't bother me, it's fine.
I don't have anything against it.
I know you don't.
It's my.
I understand completely, it's fine.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate y'all.
I think, be prudent, I think that you need to send us a financial statement after this, this event. And see what's, and then we can compare this with Seven, the whale, other vendors, and see how much is actually, is taking it off of their business as opposed to.
That's no problem, I think it enhances their business. They also obviously need to coordinate with Chief.
Right. We'll get together, we got the whole idea, Brian, and I know you're aware of it, but we got the business, there's other man that never had, shut down Main Street, it's a cruise in, it's a, in Main Street moments, it's going to be an issue, it's businesses that deserve communication, concern. But we're just struggling to add, we'll, we'll make it happen. Whether we've got to put together a transit system to transport people to events, I think the events bring economy to the area, I think they help grow the economy. We just need to reach outside the box and try to find ways to address the parking, and we will do that.
I have one suggestion, I would not put my beer tent around the Seven.
Yeah, that's good.
Probably would be an option.
Well, we just appreciate, thank y'all, and really appreciate, thank you. Appreciate being able to do it for the town, for the county, because I could have been like a lot of people, I could have left that, you know, but I kept my stuff here. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your energy.
Mayor, I couldn't, while you're on that issue, just for the record, we are pegged out, we're convinced. We're pegged out, my public works employees, my director is already over, holding his breath. We are pegged, we're pegged out. We just can't go, they need vacations, they take them in the summertime, and every blooming weekend, something going on. Last year, I can tell you for a fact, there was a lot of them, they had trips planned, they had camp.
Let's just say that that's it for.
We're pegged out.
Probably a big policy that we can work on in the work session is applications for permits for anything that's not.
It's a little bit, right. The mountain mudra is already on board, here, we're supposed to have somebody here tonight about falling to table, I don't think we're here.
This is the second month in a row.
Second month in a row, they missed that, so, running out, but we've got some events that are, I'm just saying, you would be, such as Mr. Allison, but we are, we are pegged out.
Well, I think, I think I've got to spend.
Brown, the county's early season, the ballot's long.
Yeah, about, you know, January, February, people need to get these things.
And I think, I think the council, I think the council needs to think about every time we vote on these things, how much more money it's costing the town to, for the workers and everybody out there, and cleanup and everything.
It's, it's expensive. You know, and a lot of the, a lot of the public works employees and the police and officers appreciate the overtime. However, Donna Pruitt directing public works and trying to juggle, juggle those individuals and making other ones come out that may have other plans, it gets kind of complicated with all the events we've got going on, that's a lot of events, and they was to say.
The town employees, I mean, what they getting paid, they're not getting paid that much. I think this is a good thing for them, for Christmas and stuff. It's just something that brings people into our town to look at our businesses when we got something going like this.
And like I said, it's a wonderful thing, and this problem, by God, is a once upon a.
Right, and maybe if we move forward, we need to have a event staff that we hire, we bring in to supplement, some of these, you know, is part-time.
I like it, I call it charity, delay it up, charity points.
Yes, we do, that's something we need to look at, if we're having a lot of events, we have some temporary event staff workers that we.
I think this would be good, absolutely, it would make it happen.
And most of these, most of these events have income, so it could be a charge.
And if you'll recall that email that was sent out, I mentioned that, but, Councilman Brady, you're exactly right.
I'd like to see financial statements of these events, because at the very least, it would be very good.
You know, seven, eight years ago, we wouldn't have this problem.
I know, that's a good growing thing. That's what I just was going to say, seven years ago, when I was elected to council, we just hoped that Main Street moments would happen. We didn't have this, I like this part.
It's a good problem to have, we have to be.
And move on, public comment, I think Mr. Asbury.
I thought, we should not come up here.
You can come up, just state your name and address. Well, let me choose, as much as you want to talk.
Three, three, actually, three, four. Donna, you've known me most of my life, Terry, Jack, David, Dennis, I've known most of y'all all my life. I've worked in coal mines for 40 years or two months now. I've been to seminars and conferences, how to pick up certain trucks and watch people that I've worked in coal mines. I've watched some of these employees on the town, and I've talked to it. Todd, it took me, what, three years to get up here? I'd like to see some of these town employees get some recognition for the job they do. I've watched the, they have a three-man crew that picks up my trash down on Fire Ground Road. I think they go above and beyond, they, Jack, they do an excellent job. And these boys, you watch them out working around the town here, they above and beyond. They, for instance, the back of the dragon down there. The crews in, Main Street moments, as you mentioned here a while ago, these guys go above and beyond cleaning, the personality picking up trash, the personality, and the way they, their training of thought and stuff, the way they relate to you, their manners and stuff. I think these boys deserve some recognition, and it's just took me three years, I mentioned it, you give several times, I'm talking. And I will tell you something else, the last time I come up here, I was a complainer, Jack, you know what my problem was. But I've come out with a compliment, this is from bottom depth of my heart. I stand up for right, what's right, I'll tell the truth, and I always hold to the truth, and I always be right. But in my matter of opinion, I thank these boys for the talent, they deserve, deserve some kind of recognition. They need more than a compliment, in my opinion, I think they go above and beyond. I know that, I pay attention to this, Jack, I say, since I retired, I retired in 2010. The John Roberts, me and him worked together in the coal mines down our hill, they got to stand up for the right, and if I'm right, I'll argue, get flung down if you're wrong. But this is something, I've worked a lot of men in their coal mines and stuff, and I've been trained in to just watch the work ethics, their job performance and stuff. I think these, Todd, these old boys on this town crew deserve some recognition, some kind of recognition. Them, watch this and hear these over here, and these officers, these over here, come up here and pay my water bill, my wife always seems to be paying that water bill. If you come in that office somewhere with a bright frame of mind, and in a good mood and stuff, and want to be right and do right, you can go out to that office, Todd, with a blessing right in there. And I like to thank God for that, and I think they deserve some recognition.
River, I appreciate your comments, and I tune that we got the best workers around.
Yes, you do. Just watching, and most of them, some of them.
And Jill, back there in the corner.
That's what I'm saying, I didn't want to, I stepped back there, I didn't want to say nothing to him to give him any input or not, but your blessed, with the crew love you got. It's a blessing, it's above and beyond, Jack. And that's the reason I come up, talk to him about it, off and on for three years. And not only him, but different ones, said, you need to go to the town council and get that issue addressed.
We will, we will try to do something.
Try to address it.
One way or the other, and.
Not only me, but a lot of people down Fire Ground Road, and different people I know around town here, I used to carry the huge paper to their office, their school and stuff. They talk, we talk amongst ourselves, and they, not only me, but they understood this too. And I'd like to see them get some kind of recognition.
We will be showing up sometime, and I won't let you know.
Let's do the first one, shake your hands.
But if you're ready towards you appreciate it.
What's saying that, River, sir?
Appreciate, but I appreciate it, boy.
I want to share, share, just say it right, River.
Thank y'all.
River, just say it right, River.
River, me too.
We talked about you, uh, last evening, I came down, and I had road closed for the, uh, Donald Farm, and William Asbury was working there. He went and put some stuff on the, on the concrete, and I stopped coming down the road, and we just aggravated each other, and he said, I gotta go over there and water the plants. And he said, if I don't, I said, Kim's going to get me, he said, she'll shoot me big time. So if you see William out watering plants at Mission At or 2 o'clock in the morning, he's straight as.
Back like a ball, being your, being your dad, back like a ball, I go here at 5:30 in the morning, you would see some of them boys that work for the town, that have been in town, that are doing different things that work. I think it deserves some recognition, and if they can, I sure appreciate it.
Okay.
I thank y'all.
Thank you, River. Thank you, River.
Okay, we'll move on to the, oh, the part, I had to say that, I just thought that was funny. Primal events, the council being made tonight, they are motion to approve these events.
Can I make that motion?
You have a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to those? Here none called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next is financial report.
This is something that we're going to do just a little bit different. I handed everybody one of these sheets, it's just kind of a recap. All of this information is actually under the town manager's update, if you all need to see that in your agenda.
Try to act again, it's now.
Sorry, did I get it wrong?
Well, we had it.
Sorry. But just to recap, and you all, please give me feedback, if you all like this, if you all want to see something else, if you all don't want to see something on here, just come to work with me and let me know what you all want from me.
What's wrong with this, was a lot of questions came up over the last several months, council members asked, that I told you I'd get back to you on, because I had to ask the woman that knows what's going on with finances every day, and looks at it and shows it. So this is your opportunity, Council, each week, it'll be on there each week, and if you've got a question about finances or what's going on, I can always get you an answer. I don't know how many line items, you know, she keeps, she looks at them and views them and drills them and changes them every day. I'll work with her when I get a response, and Council needs to be addressed. So this is an opportunity for Council to challenge, to challenge her and ask questions, and it will strengthen, strengthen our ability to perform on that job.
And I think keeping, keeping the budget parts on the hard copies is good. Also, I would like to see, anytime you get a grant during the month, does that sort of convolutes the revenues or expenses on a particular month? And just maybe list.
Yeah, you know, and that's a good point, Mayor. Jack, Councilman Murray asked a question last week, last month, about the police department. Well, that wasn't expensive, it was in this year's budget, but actually, those revenues came in last fiscal year. So that, obviously, you got a lot of items blown at, the perception of, you know, there's a reason for it.
Yeah, and just, this is, you know, it's a grant for police department cruisers, okay?
Okay.
And whether the revenue came in from the previous year or whatever, I mean, within the same year, I wouldn't worry about it, but if it's, it's going to be coming in in June, and then we're going to be spending it out, and the other time, you might want to, just, I like that a little bit.
Well, I like the data that you put in here, basically the ledger sheet, it's just going to take a little bit of use to. Is there anything else you'd like to see in it?
That I can say, yeah.
I mean, do you all want me to read over these, or?
I'll read this part. I'd like to point out that council, we give them a $90,46 July through May. dollars to, to...
Yeah, but you, if you look at your line items, too, Jack, within that, it tells you exactly where to spend.
The cops property and a lot of the hotel property is in that line item.
Yes, you put that in the package.
Did I help you, Gregor? It's kind of what you were...
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this? So moved? Second.
Second.
Any questions? Or additions? All in favor of a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Next on agenda is the town manager's update.
Mayor, your county, you probably have to call on most of the projects that we've got. I'm going to have the work session with you really soon to discuss a lot of topics that's been on the table for a while.
All right, next on the agenda is the planning commission. Councilman Murray.
Planning commission did leave. We discussed a lot of things that are coming up to the core. Home occupation, zoning problem, street name, and a problem on Metabu, Deer Ridge Trail, about the bound, or the classification of it. That's it?
Uh, thank you. Frankly, I guess we won't.
Currently, the architect, the town, and D-Dot are working through, what I understand, are some civil rights division issues and topics, and we continue to move toward advertising the project soon. I'm not sure what the definition soon is.
Okay, thank you. Back of the dragon, council.
If you know what we did, back of the dragon, which passed weekend, and the demolition derby on Friday, and then the actual event on Saturday, did not have the type of response that we were probably hoping for, or it might be an expectation. Everybody that I talked to throughout the day was just impressed, they were amazed, and like, can't wait to come back next year. There was three or four other events in the area on Saturday. I don't know if that had a lot to do with it. There's several issues we're going to have to discuss when we have our after-action meeting in the next couple of weeks. And I will, at that point, be bringing a financial statement from the event. And also a recommendation of where we go from here.
All right, good. All right, next is some unfinished business, update on the home occupation business, approval applications, and check list. Mr. Hurley.
As you know, I've been working on a home occupation permit and guidelines. The planning commission, we voted to go ahead and send it to council. It's, first thing, an unfinished business in the packet. Five of all the H from town like Adden, Blacksburg, Warnton, it's just a combination of a bunch of different towns in Virginia. I did do that application and sent a file of check list, and they just got rid of the check list. That's a one-time permit. If they start a home occupation, then after the first year, they start paying the taxes on whatever the gross receipts are.
I didn't see that in here.
I didn't either.
We set the threshold for where that starts, or?
Thirteen thousand is what we started on the other side.
Okay. And then from that, at that, it's taxed to fifteen cents per hundred, or what is the...
Depending on the type of deed filed, it's fifty...
You mean the first thirteen thousand, they're not taxed at all?
That's what planning commission's recommendation was.
Can I get that for my business?
Okay, now, hold, hold on a second. Now, when you get a business license...
I'm just curious, why has it been bricks and mortar versus not bricks and mortar?
When you get a business license, there's a minimum of twenty dollars. You have to make over that thirteen thousand dollars for it to be anything other than twenty dollars. That's why they set it at thirteen thousand.
That's...
Because you have to get a business license as well. So it would be your home occupation permit plus your business license.
But you had to answer your question. You've been doing... I don't know if that math quite works out, but if you give it a point, what am I paying? Point five per...
But you, you're misunderstanding, Chris. The thirteen thousand is the amount...
I understand that the threshold will break even. I get that.
No, it's the amount set to purchase the permit to do business. Next year, then they will pay taxes on their revenue.
Over thirty. Oh, I forgot. That's concept of Brad. Look at that, what Brad called me. Did you say that? Four. It's not a new tax, though. It's not a...
It's already in your code book. This is just guideline.
Yeah, it's not a new tax.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's been in your code book all along.
You know, guideline for a specific type of businesses, it's never...
If you recall, we didn't want to bridge the structure that I was working in the middle of the legislature.
Right.
So this is just guidelines, and we've never had a place, a break, and dress something up, and implement any code book, which I'll have to give directions.
Okay, do I have a motion to vote for...
That's it, or voting can give you direction.
I'll make that motion. Okay, a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is...
Good job, Chris.
Is the second reading and approval of 2017, 2018 budget, and we'll have three separate votes. The general fund revenues is six million, one hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and three cents. It's named for the expenditures. Do I have a motion to adopt the general fund budget? So moved? Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The water fund.
Mr. is taking... Just to back up one, you just...
Well, let's just... Let me finish this.
But it's being backed up. These things, it's already started.
Yeah. Okay, so the water fund revenues and expenditures are one million, four hundred seventy-one thousand and thirty dollars. Do I have your motion to adopt the water fund budget?
So moved.
Have a second. I want, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda is sewer fund. Sewer funds revenues and expenditures are one million, two hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred eleven dollars and eighty-one cents. Do I have your motion to adopt that?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you're none called for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we'll go back to, uh, recycling bins. Sorry about that.
No, it happens to the best of us.
You just...
I played a lucky long string there, too. As I mentioned earlier, the recycling bins are open. The recycling bins are located beside the rescue squad on Steel Lane. They will be managed, obviously, by the town of Tazle. Hours of operation are Tuesdays and Thursdays from seven AM to three thirty. There is a part-time employee there that will greet you when you come in there, and if your bag is small enough, you don't even have to get out the vehicle, hand it out to window to him. There will be no garbage containers there. The only garbage containers there will be utilized for municipal use only. Of course, we go door to door, you know, but we haven't been that back here anymore. Saturdays from seven AM to two, and that's what will be advertised, just as you see on the drawings there. Town Tazle recycling van will go on the wooden front along with this recycling animal. Been a long time coming. I want to thank Donnie Pruitt again for making, making stuff happen. So congratulations, council, we're open for business. You're welcome.
It'll be your chance, drive by and drop something off.
Just don't make it gorgeous.
Okay. I don't know why you can't vote on that.
I didn't just vote to say it's, uh, okay.
It's really happened.
Vote on your vote. Okay, we're moving on to the...
I have one supplemental, you can agree with me.
Okay.
I just, I was talking to Sean Durk yesterday out at the Y, and he just wanted me to relay to everybody that that six hundred, I think it was six hundred dollar grant we gave them for the art class. Oh, yeah. He said to let everybody know that every one of those spots was filled, and, you know, he appreciates it, and, you know, we feel excited that they built right up, so. It must have been...
Thank you.
Took a while to back at us.
Okay, next on agenda is the new business, garbage truck bid.
Okay, you've got in your packet a copy of the, the award, I mean, the bid of it that we had, the time and date. Obviously, we had one, one bid, the amount of the garbage truck is one forty-one, four fourteen. We do have it hammer to rise over five years, and I'm just asking for council's approval, and it is in your budget, as we discussed earlier, to proceed with the understanding that the interest rate will be no more than two point five five, which is our lowest so far. I just need a vote to...
I'll make a motion that we proceed.
A second, Mr. Hurley.
Make your motion, and a second. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Next on agenda is the street name approval. Again, Mr. Hurley.
First page on the new business, there was a map. The final day to go through, the urban one, letting you slip on, but you had to have a street name for the Fairmont Apartments. Go down Coral Island, take a ride on Fairmont Avenue, that's around the end of the farms. The map shows, it even shows a new address for the farms. Planning commission voted yes on it. I hope this is the last street we have to vote on.
Amen. I'll make that motion.
Second. Do you have a motion to name the street of Fairmont, Lewis Lane?
I was brought from the plat, that was GW Lewis, I don't think the idiot, Max, I mean.
Lewis Lane, that's not a Louis.
I got a motion, and I have a second.
I already seconded.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Do you have any other people who want for a vote, council?
I'll make the motion, we go home.
We'll, we'll have to recess.
Oh, that's right.
We have a motion to recess pending a legal...
You can either do that, Mayor, if you'd like. I can just advertise on my doors for three days prior to the meeting, and be able to hit the mention of it, but we'll, we'll get it. Just, just during the meeting, we'll, we'll...
Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Remember, over to aye.